Five, Sumner, you want to begin your presentation regarding the open space plan?
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. The city contracted the Monmouth Regional Planning Commission to prepare this open space and recreation plan, and so they're asking for everyone to peruse through this. And if you -- this is just the draft, and if you could peruse through it and make any comments to us by November 1st, so that we can finalize it and have our final plan. So as part of the plan for the open space and recreation, there was a survey conducted and mapping done by the Regional Planning Commission, and Karen Chapman was hired. She is the Commission's Planning and Development Director now, and she was hired to put that together for us, and Kayla Kress did the mapping for the city. Connie Breed, who works for the Rec Department, as part of the plan, there's the ADA Accessibility Self-Evaluation Report that goes through all of the facilities in the city for conservation and recreation land. So Connie over here, she works for us part-time, and she put together that plan for us that's required of the open space and recreation plan. So Karen is here today and is going to give a presentation, a brief presentation for us, and if you have any questions, Dick O'Brien also helped with the plan, and Wendy Weeks, and Karen will introduce everyone on our plan.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. So I'm going to go off of the handout that I gave you. So this is the 2021-2028 Open Space and Recreation Plan. They're good for seven years. These are a couple of nice pictures of our parks in Leominster. The Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee, these are the members, and we have here Connie Breed, Judy Sumner, Dick O'Brien, Wendy Weeks, and Mickey Guzman over there in the back that are represented here today, and Pauline was also a member. The next page is contributors and participators. Mark Burdanza, thank you for your history lesson. Myself, the assessor, provided a lot of data on parcels. Kayla Kress, my colleague, did the mapping, the mayor, and Stephanie Witten from the Planning Department. The next page, the next two pages are things that happened since the last plan that was approved in 2014. These two pages add up to $1.8 million in grants to improve the recreation and open space in the city.
Ted, can I just say a word?
Yes.
Dick O'Brien here. Yep. I just want to point out, so that you're all fully aware, the primary value of this open space plan is it makes the city eligible for all of the grant money that Wendy has written grants for to secure for the city. Without the approved plan, the city isn't eligible for that money. So that's one of the most important concrete benefits of having an approved open space plan, and it's also one of the benefits of having a great grant for that in the city. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we did two surveys. One was an organization survey, which we sent out to the organizations in the city that provide youth sports or adult sports, and some questions related to the facilities, and if you have any issues, do you need any resources, things like that. We did a public survey that was 18 different questions about what kinds of recreation or open space you like, what you like to do, what you think we need more of. And this little graph here, I just wanted to show that the responses were well represented in all of the wards, so you'll be happy with that. The full survey and its results can be found in the plan, which will be online when it's completed, so you can read all the comments.
Right now, the draft is on the Rec Department's open Facebook page right now, and also you should have a copy of that as well. I think I emailed it also, and we have flash drives if you wanted to view that also, or if you need a hard copy, I have hard copies also.
Will the full draft plan be online, Judy? You know, prior to 11/1, if people want to read it online and comment online, can they go to the Rec Department website?
Yes.
Thank you. So on the website or the Facebook page?
It's on Facebook, but I'll have to double-check to see if the person that does our webpage put it on. I believe she put it on. I had sent it to her, so I'd have to double-check because I did give her the flash drive to download it on our website. Thank you.
So the next page, I just wanted to point out one question on the survey. What actions do you favor to preserve open space? And these are all the items that were close to or above 50%. Obviously, taxpayers don't want to pay for anything if it's going to raise their property taxes. We all know that already. One, mandate the dedication of open space recreation space by developers. We met with the planning board last Monday night and gave a presentation and are hoping to collaborate with them on that and promote donations to Leominster Open Space Fund. That can be a fundraising effort. So the next page is the goals that we came up with after the survey and all the public input, and these are the five goals. I'm not going to read them out. You can read them for yourself. But they took the five goals, and then they broke it down to 47 individual objectives under those five goals, and those objectives then have 152 tasks within it. And the next page shows a sample of the implementation schedule that the committee put together. It's several pages, and I just put the first page on here, so you can see what it's like. You know, what is the objective? What are the tasks? Who's responsible? What are the dates to start and end? Estimated cost, and then whether it's a priority, medium, low, or high. And the next page, they took all of those objectives and tasks and came up with the top 10 action items for the life of this plan, and those are listed here. And I just wanted to point out number three to you, because the City Council is mentioned as a lead player, and this is to establish a permanent, ongoing, open space committee and increase efforts to raise funds for land protection. So it's really important, number one, like Dick said, to have this plan, because you can get grants with it, but without a committee or dedicated people to implement the plan, it's not going to work. It'll just sit on the shelf. Judy will be overworked, and so they're asking you to have a permanent open space committee. And then number eight, secure funding to conduct assessment of need and use of athletic fields for all the leagues. So this is another City Council item, and I believe it would just be to appropriate the money. And then the last page is just a map of those 10 items, and they point out, you can read in the little boxes, those numbers correspond to the list, and it shows where in the city that these projects would take place. And so that's our quick presentation.
Very well.
Is there any questions?
One minute to spare.
Any member of the council have questions for the committee? All right. Any questions for us?
I wanted to thank the committee for many online meetings that we had, you know, for quite some time to put this all together. I appreciate all their time spent on this, and departments that helped contribute to this plan. And this is a resource. I mean, when I first started, you know, working on the plan, I couldn't believe it has the list of all the city properties, you know, and nonprofit lands as well. You can just look it up. It's right in the plan, and it has really nice maps that shows you where all the open spaces in the city. So it's a reference for people to have.
Judy, is there a hard copy at the library?
There's two copies right now of the draft, so we will provide two copies also at the library as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
And it'll be online as well. And it's nice, because the maps, you can zoom right in on the maps. They're, you know, really detailed, and they'll have all the trails in there. It's a really great resource for anyone to use, the public and the city departments and the City Council.
Councilor Shalfo Zaffa, did you have a question?
Yeah, more of a comment. But no, thank you very much. This is great work, and just to establish an ongoing, permanent, open space committee is an absolute necessity. I mean, we should have one. And Karen mentioned that if we didn't, you know, Judy would be overworked. She'd be more overworked, I think, than she is currently, so I just wanted to get that in.
Okay, well, thank you very much for all of your effort, hard work. Councilor Frieda.
Just quickly, Judy, was there any discussion on your committee about trying to pursue the Community Preservation Act?
Pardon me? Oh, oh, we had a discussion about that, but not an in-depth discussion. We've had, not with the entire committee.
That goes back to the days of Matt Marrow, who wanted to submit that, never did, and I think we lost out back then by probably not doing it when it was new and everybody was -- now I think it's a little more difficult to try to pursue that. I don't know how funding is now anyway, but...
There's a lot of communities now that are getting funding for that as part of preservation.
Yeah, the match that you get now is considerably less than the match that was available when it first was appropriate, but it's still, because it deals with goals that are somewhat outside just open space and recreation, it deals with affordable housing. It really needs to be a broader discussion within a group in the city to see the viability of that. It does, for instance, my company does projects across the state, and we do a lot of trail projects for communities that have community preservation funds, and most of the state grants are looking for, you know, as much as 20 to 30 or 40 percent match. And those communities are providing that match with the community preservation funds, and so it allows for those communities to go forward with these projects because they have that funding available to put towards it. Leominster could benefit the same way, but again, I think it needs a broader discussion than just the usual trails and open space folk.
It's a tough sell.
Yeah.
No question. It's a tough sell.
Yeah. Anything else, Councilor? Okay. Anyone else? Councilor Angelina?
Thank you, Mr. President. For either one of four guests we have this evening, is there a recreational trails grant application in the queue this year, or something that the city's working on?
There, as far as I know, we haven't decided to submit one for this year. The deadline for those grants is February 1st, so there's certainly time, and there are any number of possibilities for a trails grant. I would, I have been encouraging the city to try and apply every year. The grant, and Wendy knows this, the conditions for accepting these grants and administering them have just gotten more and more bureaucratic as time goes on. And so when the program first began, it was a pretty light load to lift to get that grant. Now, it's a little different story. It doesn't mean it isn't a valuable thing to do, but it just isn't quite as simple to do as it was. But given the needs out there, the city is eligible on its own for $50,000 a year. And having sat on that committee for 18 years, I know we approved grants to communities for as much as seven to 10 years in a row. There's no reason why Leominster shouldn't be getting that money to do some stuff.
So one project that, you know, I had proposed is to have a map done that we can distribute to the community, because we have numerous requests from people coming in wanting us to print out each individual map. So we're handing out packets. We know we're, you know, handing them out on, you know, eight and a half by 11 sheets, and some of those are colored maps. So we need to have a map of all our trails. So we're working on trying to finalize our maps right now. We're working with regional planning to finalize all the maps. We have a few more trails to add to that, and so that's what we hope to have. And that can be online, and it can be put, you know, with a QR code. It'll bring you right to the maps. So we want a handout, because a lot of people want something physical, and that was my proposal for a grant.
One last question, if I may, Mr. President. I know a few months back, there was some discussion about a stewardship grant for a parcel land that the city already owns. It's managed by the Conservation Commission, Upland Meadow Habitat Project. So is that something that's on the back burner or something?
No, we wrote that grant, and we received it. We're doing the work for that grant as we speak now.
Congratulations.
And I would love to see us again apply for more grant money for that parcel. It's a great parcel. It connects with the larger trail system. It's an interesting ecological habitats there, and it would be a great access to the larger trail system for those neighborhoods in that area. So we're all in favor of that, and, you know, that's one of several trail grants we could do. I was talking with some of the emergency management personnel, and they were telling me to get up to the top of South Manusnock from the time they get a call to when they'd get up on top of the hill, about an hour's time. So if you had a medical emergency and you needed them to get up there quick, it's not going to happen. Given the current condition of the trails and the roads, we should be applying for funding both from the trail system and other sources to upgrade that, so that in these kinds of emergencies, we can get up there in a timely manner to provide help and assistance to people who might need it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've all seen how quickly a forest can be destroyed with fire on a national level. In California, it's been all over the news recently, so I think it would be wonderful if the fire department was more accessible to that property. And I know, I just read, actually, in our packet tonight, the city, with the help of a astute grant writer, is going to be purchasing a brush truck. So I think that'll give us a little more flexibility, too, perhaps, to get up in the tougher terrain.
I mean, I was just out the other weekend with Paul Kennedy, who's a forest fire warden, a forest warden. I mean, we cut 10 or 12 trees that were across the roads, blocking access to that in times of an emergency. You know, to have to stop and cut trees out of the way to get to that, that's valuable time lost. So there are a lot of needs, and again, we have one grant writer who has limited time, but, you know, there are ways to try and augment your talents and expertise with some draft grants and stuff. So we'll be pursuing that.
And currently, the Rec Department is working with the Leominster Trail Stewards and Dick O'Brien on doing a trail vision plan for the city. We hope to have that completed this year, and as part of that vision plan, we had recommended that there be a trails commission that would help with that, so that way, anything that comes up within the city on trails, there's people on top of that, and if there's grants, they can work with that and help with that. So if there's a separate commission, we were discussing that right now and making recommendations on that.
All right. And lastly, I'd just like to thank you all for, obviously, the time and effort that you put into this, and all the volunteers, Mr. O'Brien, that accompany you on those trail
Oh, yeah.
maintenance projects. They often go unnoticed, but certainly appreciate their efforts. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilor Oringer.
Thank you, Mr. President. You mentioned vision, Judy, just a minute ago, and several years ago, I remember, I think it was Mr. O'Brien, that talked about having a trail system that entirely circled the city. Is that still something you're working on, or, you know, has it happened?
It's been a vision of mine for 30 years now.
Okay.
We, for instance, part, one of the objectives in here is to try and work with DCR and the Leominster Land Trust, which is sort of semi-defunct, but it still exists. They own a key parcel that might be the gateway into the Johnny Appleseed Park, about 250 acres along the Nashua River. In those trails, there are trails there, but we cannot, technically, we cannot use those because DCR owns that property, and they don't want to open it up to the public because they don't have staff to do anything with it. We need to see if we can work out an agreement with them so that we can use those trails as part of this loop of hiking and walking around the city. And there are a number of critical little sections to make that a vision a reality. I mean, we have a key little piece of land, maybe an acre or two between Schollen Farms and Samoset and, what's the other school there?
Fallbrook.
Fallbrook. So we don't have a trail connection from those schools to Schollen Farms. That, as an educational and recreational asset to those schools, that little connection ought to happen. I mean, and there are grants that will pay for the acquisition of that. Likewise, from the Doyle property to the West Street Trailhead, there's a little piece there that we would love to see that trail connection made.
And that's one of the goals on?
All of these are part of that larger vision that we keep on promoting and hope to work with the planning board and the planning department to push landowners to consider allowing use of a portion of their land for this trail.
All right, thank you. Ms. Summer, you, Sumner, I'm sorry, you mentioned several commissions, and could you just kind of summarize what commissions you're looking to establish to help this process?
Well, we were talking about having a trails commission
Trails commission.
And also to an open space and recreation.
So just two additional commissions you're looking for. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilor Dombrowski, we're going to just wait a minute or so and open the meeting before we get to your public hearing.
Wake up. Wake up.
I would think.
Drink that chowder.
Yeah.
You want a bag?
Chowder.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as one.
Now, I'm going to call the role of councilors in attendance, starting with Counselor Frida.
Present.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Arndinger.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor David Cormier.
Present.
I shall be recorded as present. We have eight members present this evening. And we'll now turn to the Chairman of Records. Do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. President. I've reviewed the minutes of September 13th, 2021. There were a few minor corrections that were made, but I now find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Very well. We have a public hearing, so I'm now going to ask for a motion to recess. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, do you have a second? All those in favor, recognize the usual manner. We are in recess. And Counselor Dombrowski, you have the floor on 75-21.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 75-21, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of dumpster location and screening. Mr. Souza, you want to come on in? We have the Chairman of the Planning Board with us. We received a message from Elizabeth that she wouldn't be able to attend tonight. Are you going to be carrying the ball?
I'm carrying the ball.
All right. Well, you're getting set. I'm going to read some stuff into the record quickly.
Okay.
We had a letter from Elizabeth Wood, the Planning and Development Director, dated June 8th, 2021. This is addressed to the city clerk. Per the request of the Planning Board Chair, I present to the council revisions to the zoning ordinance as it pertains to dumpsters on commercial properties. The reason for this proposal is that the Planning and Development Department has experienced difficulty with current businesses in regards to where their dumpster is located. The ordinance does not currently specify exactly where a dumpster must be located, and this has posed a problem as dumpsters have been situated in areas such as parking lots that are not accessible by the dumpster service vehicle during certain hours of the day when the parking lot is being utilized. The proposed amendment to the ordinance gives flexibility to where the dumpster must be located. However, it clearly states that the dumpster must be shown on the plan and that it must be accessible 24 hours per day. Additionally, while we're on the topic of dumpsters, the Planning Board is proposing amendments to the landscaping standards in terms of screening of the dumpsters. Minor edits include providing the option of screening to be composed of masonry or natural material and specifying that screening shall be a minimum of six feet in height. All suggested edits are displayed in the attached document. The provisions that are suggested for amendment would affect both special permit, site plan applications, and building permit issuance. I'm consulting with the Building Department and Health Department for feedback. Any comments generated will be provided to you. That's signed by the Planning Director. There's another communication dated July 7th from Elizabeth Wood indicating that the Planning Board had scheduled a public hearing. There is another communication dated September 22nd. The communication, this is addressed to the city clerk from Elizabeth Wood. The communication serves to inform you that the Planning Board held a public hearing on petition 75-21 pertaining to amending Article 9, Section 2245, and Article 11, Section 2262 pertaining to location and screening of dumpsters on 9/20/2021. Based on comments received from the Health Director, see attached, the Planning Board voted 8-0 to make amendments to draft language. The new language being proposed is attached with track changes displayed and is attached. The recommendations of the Health Director were provided to the Building Commissioner for his review and comment. The Building Commissioner provided a response on 9/21/2021, and those comments are also attached to the memo. This is again signed by Elizabeth Wood. The first question I'd have, Mr. Souza, is that at the public hearing, did the Planning Board vote to recommend passage?
Yes, we did.
Of this? You did. Okay. That's not clear in the letter. Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. We have another letter, a communication from Jeffrey Stevens. He's the new Lemister Health Director. This is to Elizabeth Wood, dated September 20th, 2021. Good morning, Elizabeth. In reading the proposed changes in the dumpster regulations, I have one comment. Section 45-1-6-1 says that dumpsters should be accessible 24 hours a day. The rubbish contract only allows pickup between the hours of 7:00 and 7:00. Do you think this line infers dumpsters can be emptied 24 hours per day? I do have some additional comments regarding dumpsters being left for use on city streets and businesses and residential areas. All dumpsters should be free of holes, rust, and damage that would create a nuisance or hazard to the general public. Dumpsters 10 yards and smaller should have appropriate covers and be leak-proof in order to prevent contamination of groundwater or discharge of liquids into storm drains. Dumpster should be properly labeled and marked with contact phone numbers at all times. If this language is already in there somewhere, please disregard these comments. Thank you. Sincerely, Jeffrey Stevens. We do have an email response from the Building Inspector to Elizabeth Wood based on the Health Director's comments. And the Building Inspector writes, well, he was asked by the, I'm sorry, he was asked by Elizabeth Wood, "Do you have any response to the Health Director's comments? Would you be able to enforce his suggested restrictions?" His comments are, this is from the Building Inspector to Elizabeth Wood, "As long as it is in zoning, I can enforce it, but it will take a lot of time and energy. I would prefer that it not be put in zoning." And then we have some of the changes. So I don't know if you want to just give us a quick summary, Mr. Souza?
Yes. What's happened? We've had a number of cases. I'll take one of them. The medical marijuana facility on Locke Drive. They came up with a whole plan. They did their parking lot, and the parking lot required so many parking places. I'll go from memory. I want to say 12 or 14, it was in that range. And we said, okay, fine. And we gave them approval. And they said, well, we're going to put a dumpster in here. Well, wait a minute. The dumpster came after the fact. They didn't really have a good location. And where they wanted to put it, if they put it there, a truck couldn't get to it. And it eliminated, but then, if you put the dumpster in, they were now not in compliance because they didn't have the parking places because they utilized parking places to put the dumpster. That's only one. The police station, when they came to us for the plan for the police station, the dumpster was way, I don't know if you can remember, it was a far corner near the road going out. But if you had made that, there was no way that where that dumpster was and where the parking was at that time, there was a truck could access the dumpster because the length of the dumpster and the length of the truck added up larger than the area had to where the dumpster was. So it's easy to put it on the drawing, but to get it to work made it something else. So that's where, those are the two very recent ones that we worked with, that we found there was an issue. And it keeps on popping up here and there. It's kind of a thorn every once in a while. So we said, let's do something. Let's take the input from different people. We accepted the input from the Board of Health. And we added that language in there as far as the marking and leakage. And we wanted to put something in it also, so it started to camouflage it so it looked a little better. And that there has to, the smaller ones have covers. Now, if somebody comes in with a big one where they're doing major construction, that's going to be part of the construction. That's over 10 yards. And those only get covered when the truck picks them up. So that's sort of a thumbnail. And so that's why we put it together, try to, we were reacting to some issues that had happened in the past.
Okay. The initial zoning ordinance, not zoning ordinance, the initial ordinance change was dated June 7th, 2021.
Right.
And then I think after you had the communication with the Health Director.
Right.
You changed it on September 20th, 2021. There's some further edits and amendments?
That's correct.
So the Planning Board is essentially asking the council to accept these amendments?
The amendments. That is correct.
Okay. All right. And I'll just, I think just for purposes of the public hearing, I probably should go over all that. So the initial proposal called for inserting, and we're in the dumpster regulations section, Section 22-45, and inserting in new Section 45.1.6, dumpster access, location, and screening is the title. And then 45.1.6.1 would read, dumpster location shall be shown on the plan with sufficient access for dumpster service vehicle. Dumpsters shall be accessible for service 24 hours per day. And then also, Section 62.3.3, which is the title of that, is landscaping standards. And the changes that were proposed were, the ordinance read, exposed storage areas, machinery, garbage dumpsters, service area, truck loading areas, utility buildings, and structures must be screened from the view of abutting properties and streets using planting fences. And the proposed additional language, masonry, natural material, and then continuing indoor, other methods compatible with the goals of this regulation. And then additional insert of screening shall be a minimum of six feet in height. So those were the June 7th proposals. And then, that's been changed as of September 20th, 2021. So Section 22-45, titled Parking Loading Plan Required, would now read, we would have a new Section 45.1.6, dumpster access, location, and screening, followed by 45.1.6.1, dumpster location shall be shown on the plan with sufficient access for dumpster service vehicle. Dumpsters shall be accessible for service 24 hours per day. 45.1.6.2, all dumpsters shall be free of holes, rust, and damage that would create a nuisance or hazard to the general public. Dumpsters smaller than 10 yards shall have appropriate covers and be leak-proof in order to prevent contamination of groundwater or discharge of liquids into storm drains. And an additional 45.1.6.3, which would read, dumpsters shall be properly labeled and marked with contact phone numbers at all times. And the landscaping standards would remain the same where you're inserting masonry and natural material as an additional screening.
Right.
And also that the screening shall be a minimum of six feet in height.
Correct.
Okay. I'll go to my committee first. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, do you have any questions?
I do. Yeah. Thank you very much. The 45.1.6.1, the second sentence, excuse me, dumpster shall be accessible for service 24 hours a day. That's something I know that the new Health Director raised in his comments. Because right now, the rubbish collection contract only has dumpsters being emptied from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., I believe. And he raised this flag about possibly having them serviced 24 hours a day.
Ability to. Okay. That can, when we do a site plan, that's something we can waive. That's a waivable item. So if the situation, now, there are some situations where you're working three shifts, okay? And there are other places where it's a, it can be a restaurant or something, that they're going to be closed later on. So you wouldn't want it, or a closed area. So we can change the hours. The board can change that on a waiver basis. But we wanted to put that in, that it's accessible because we didn't, that goes back to the problems that we had with parking. There was cases where dumpster vehicles were coming in at the middle of the night.
Sure.
And picking stuff up. And in some neighborhoods, you don't want that sometimes.
Exactly.
So we can always say, hey, no, in this situation, we don't. Okay? We did that at Walmart. When Walmart, there's only a certain hours, after hours, that they can pick up. The truck backs up, restrictions like that. So there are things that we can do.
You can make that a condition of the approval.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
But it's easier by putting it in and then conditioning it than trying to put it in after.
Counselor Cormier?
Yeah. Thank you very much. So if we were to pass an ordinance like this, this would be on a going-forward basis. Well, everybody right now would be pre-existing non-conforming.
Correct.
So it would only be on a going-forward basis that these things would, over time, be required.
Whenever we write an ordinance, it's always, whoever they grandfathered in to what they have, okay? You can't go back, unless it's a real hazard, then we have other methods to go back and do something. But traditionally, no. You wouldn't go back to the current people. What do they have today? They have. It's primarily the new businesses coming in that would be, this would be required.
Yeah. If you read the beginning part of the existing ordinance, it would apply to new special permit applications or site plan
Right.
applications or new building permits.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, that's in there. Okay.
I'm good for the moment. Yeah. Good. Thank you very much.
In the instance of an existing business that has a dumpster, if they were replacing it or expanding it, you know, say their business has grown, so they wanted to replace, you know, one size with another larger size, would they have to come back to the Planning Board to swap that out?
No, only if they reached the criteria for site plan, which would be 10,000 square feet and 10 parking places. So if they weren't coming back for a site plan, they would just change the dumpster. They would just change it. They wouldn't be affected. But if they were putting a, let's see, leak tights on the process, well, they'd come back to us to put an addition on. So in that case, it was more than 10,000 square feet, we would be, you know, that would come into play now. Okay. But if it existed prior, it would not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other counselor have any questions or comments? Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question, I think, relates to the response that we got from the Building Commissioner's office. With the best of intentions, these ordinances come before the council, and I know a lot of work goes into them at the Planning Board. But it all boils down, at the end of the day, to enforcement, now, doesn't it? And when I see a response that says, if it's zoning, I can enforce it, but it's going to take a lot of time and effort, that gets my attention. Because I think as councilors, we hear from the public all the time on those very issues. So I just want to make it perfectly clear that if we do pass this ordinance, or any ordinances in the future, demand enforcement, we better have enforcement. And, I mean, it's great to say, in theory, it sounds wonderful. But when the rubber hits the road, a lot of times, we don't have the enforcement that we were promised. And it's disappointing, and it's frustrating. And we got to find a way to make sure that it doesn't continue to happen. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will yield the floor.
No. I think that's well said. Any other questions or comments?
But if it existed prior, it would not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselor have any questions or comments? Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question, I think, relates to the response that we got from the building commissioner's office. With the best of intentions, these ordinances come before the council, and I know a lot of work goes into them at the planning board. But it all boils down at the end of the day to enforcement, now, doesn't it? And when I see a response that says, if it's zoning, I can enforce it, but it's going to take a lot of time and effort, that gets my attention. Because I think as counselors, we hear from the public all the time on those very issues. So I just want to make it perfectly clear that if we do pass this ordinance, or any ordinances in the future, demand enforcement, we better have enforcement. And, I mean, it's great to say, in theory, it sounds wonderful, but when the rubber hits the road, a lot of times, we don't have the enforcement that we were promised. And it's disappointing and it's frustrating, and we got to find a way to make sure that it doesn't continue to happen. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will yield the floor.
No, I think that's well said. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Arndt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question. We're talking about commercial properties.
Right.
Multi-unit housing, is that considered to be commercial?
No. It comes in a separate set of rules.
Okay. As I go around town, I see a lot of these dumpsters sitting on sidewalks, stuff like that with an apartment, it just blows my mind.
Well, that's right. No, I wish I was. See, we do look at that now. It's part of the site plans that we do for a subdivision, for new homes, for, you know, we do look at, you know, we can use that dumpster requirement and say, hey, these are some of the, it gives us some, to say, hey, here's the plan. Now, there will be a plan when we approve it. Now, will they follow through on the plan is, you know, and that's where your enforcement comes. And so we can, there's a lot of times we put things on the plan and it never happens. And we had, now leave names out just to protect the guilty. We had one, you know, it was funny, a funny little story is that we had a company that, I think about 30, 35 years ago, they came in with a beautiful plan. And they expanded their building, did all kinds of things, and they showed detention ponds and all the rest of that. And within the last four, five years, they came back to us, they wanted to expand. They had done, they never had done their detention ponds. But they had gotten their site plan, they had gotten their approvals, and off they went. They got the occupancy and they never finished the job. So we're trying to close those loopholes. We're trying to catch up with some of those things, but it's always somebody finds another way around, you know, and we, you know, like a whack of mold, we keep on trying to hit them and correct them.
Just regarding, like, one or two multi-unit buildings, really, there's nothing you can do about them having their dumpster sitting on the sidewalk.
No, I can't, but the planning, the DPW and the board of health can.
Okay.
Okay, so.
The zoning enforcement office that can handle that.
The zoning enforcement officer.
That is absolutely illegal. You cannot place a structure on a sidewalk.
I didn't think so, but yeah, I see it on occasion.
No, when I was city solicitor, I handled a couple of those.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, that's where you have, the city really, it's really important that the city have a good, you know, the zoning enforcement officer is the, you know, is the eyes and ears of the planning board. Because we don't have the ability to do that. We approve it, we say this, but we have no way of following through. And we rely on that department to look at things like that and try to correct it. And I think we've been a little bit lax in that area. But we're working on it.
Any other questions?
No further questions, thank you.
Counsel Berdanza?
Just a minor suggestion. Mr. Souza, 45 point 1 point 6 point 3, which is the provision relative to marking, markings on the dumpster. It says properly labeled, which is, I'm not sure what that means. I think I know what it's intended.
Okay.
I would suggest that that be written, dumpsters should be properly labeled and marked with dumpster service contractor names and phone numbers at all times?
Yeah, that's not a problem.
I think that's what's intended by.
Yeah.
I think the name should be on there as well as the phone.
I think that's what our intention was.
Just a minor, minor little thing.
Yeah, that would go forward, that's not a problem.
That's all, yeah.
That's all part of the intent.
Any other counselor? Okay, I'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Okay, seeing none, I'll just go to the council one more time. Any questions, comments, anything? Mr. President, we could just do some quick subcommittee work?
Sure.
I think that in theory, I, in favor of this, I would like to take an opportunity just to work on the language a little bit. So my, my recommendation would be to give further time, and then I would put together and some, an edited version. You know, there's not going to be a lot of edits, but just a little bit cleaner version, and then circulate it for you guys to review. So that would be, my recommendation would be further time with hopefully a clean version that we can pass. Counsel Zephyr?
I agree with that, that's fine.
Okay, Counsel David Cormier?
I'm also fine with that.
Okay. So at this point, Mr. President, we'll close the public hearing.
Okay, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to have the.
I don't know.
For the edits?
Oh, for the edits, that's right, that's a good point, yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, we can't close the public hearing, so we'll continue the public hearing to the next.
Okay, so when it comes up on the agenda, later on the agenda, we'll take care of that.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you. Like to thank Counsel Frida for that catch.
All right, we're gonna, thank you, Mr. Souza.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're now going to conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying a specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president. Clarification may be given. We don't have anybody formally signed up. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on a matter that is on our agenda this evening? And a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? Seeing none, I'll declare the public forum closed. We are now back in session, starting with communications from the mayor, and specifically appointments.
Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests the appointment of Michael Sici of 270 Hill Street to the Conservation Commission term to expire April 15th, 2024.
The appointment of Michael Sici is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with interviews on October 12th, is that our next meeting?
Yes.
At 6 o'clock.
Very well, thank you. Moving on to the next appointment.
Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests the appointment of Richard Gulick of 151 Old Farm Road to the Conservation Commission term to expire April 15th, 2024.
And the appointment of Richard Gulick is forward to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course with interview on October 12th at 6:05.
Very well, that may be done. Moving on to the appointment of Kenneth Ridlon.
Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests the appointment of Kenneth Ridlin of 514 West Street to the Conservation Commission term to expire April 15th, 2024.
The appointment of Kenneth Ridlon is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course with interviews on 10:12 at 6:10. And Madam Clerk, did we get a resume for Kenneth Ridlin? I saw the other two, but I didn't see.
No, but I can reach out to request one.
Can we work on getting one?
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course, clients, they look like excellent candidates, so I think it's plus.
All right, moving on to communications, starting with C14.
C14, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests that Mark Moog be exempt from the provisions of MGL Chapter 268A 20B, conflict of interest regarding City of Leominster employee and tennis coach from Leominster High School.
C14 is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President, regular course. Can we, I know we do this, this is a matter of form, and I don't have an issue with it. I did have somebody ask me, though, if there were other people looking for these same positions. Is this somebody already in the system that is taking another position, somebody doesn't have one? I don't think that's the case most of the time. Can we just get an idea, has Mark Moog been in this position for a while? I think he has. If we could just get an idea if they're, can't call them a reappointment, but if they're renew, we're renewing their conflict of interest exemption so they can continue? Just to get some kind of a little bit of background so we can answer the question.
Okay, very well, we'll make sure that the mayor has that request. Okay, moving on to orders, starting with the emergency preamble.
Do you want to vote for it first or?
No, read it first.
C18, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests that an appropriation of $375,788 be made to the police department equipment expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Required in-service training, $325,788, equipment $50,000, bringing it to the total of $375,788.
Okay, so this is a request under the charter for an emergency preamble. I'm going to ask the chairman of finances just to make a prima facie case on the emergency preamble portion alone?
Yes, this is for funding that, you know, is required with the police reform. There's some training that needs to be done, and it needs to be done sooner than later. So that is the reason for the emergency.
Okay. And I suppose we should check with members of your committee on the emergency preamble. Counsel Pauline Cormier? Counsel Angelini?
The nature of the request, and I support it.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation to endorse the emergency preamble. Is there any discussion? Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I have a question for the finance chair. The, I understand the need to get this kind of training done. However, the chief's letter to the mayor was dated August 18th. So I'm wondering why it takes six weeks or five and a half weeks from then to come down here as an emergency.
I couldn't answer that, you have to ask to the mayor. I don't know why.
Yeah, I certainly don't either. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the emergency preamble, please recognize in usual manner. Opposed? So that passes by a vote of seven to one. Counsel Shalfo Zephyr opposed. All right, do you want to, Mr. Chairman, do you want to take it up now? Want to take it up granting it?
Absolutely. I'll read it again. C-18, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of $375,788 be made to the police department expense, the police department equipment expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is required in-service training, $325,788, and equipment $50,000 for a total of $375,788. We do have a letter here, and this shows a breakdown of everything that is required. Not going to read all of it, it is pretty lengthy, but it does obviously involve training and equipment. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-18, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Very well, Counsel Pauline Cormier?
I'm also reading the documentation, and this is what they, this is the bare minimum that they need to remain compliant with the state and federal requirements, so I am in support.
Very well. Counsel Angelini?
I'll make it unanimous, Mr. President.
Very well. Any further discussion? I would note, if the letter was dated the 18th, our last meeting in August was the 23rd of August, correct? So if it didn't make that agenda, this would be the next agenda, correct?
September 13th.
September 13th, that's right, sorry. Okay, point well taken. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please recognize in usual manner. Those opposed, passes by a vote of eight to nothing. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, ordered to appropriate $375,788 to the police department equipment expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Required in-service training, $325,788, and equipment $50,000 for a total of $375,788. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed? The order was adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C19.
C19, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests the city council to accept CARES Act Phase 3 regarding COVID funds, Phase 3.
C19 is referred to the chairman of, I'm sorry, to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course.
Regular course. Moving on to C20.
C20, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests to appropriate $100,000 for the purchase of a new brush truck for the Leominster Fire Department, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding 10% match on FEMA grant.
C20 is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C-20 is given regular course. Moving on to C-21.
C-21, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests to appropriate $2,909.09 for purchase of facepieces related to SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus for every firefighter, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding 10% match on FEMA grant.
C21 is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Thank you. C21 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-22.
C-22, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests to appropriate $224,700 for the bank stabilization project located adjacent to the treatment plant near the Leominster Connector, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding 25% match to a previously received MEMA hazard mitigation grant.
C-22 is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-22 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-23.
C-23, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests to appropriate $55,875 to continue the Manus Knock Brook wall replacement project, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding required 33% match for the MVP Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant.
C-23 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Once again, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
C-23 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with 9-22.
9-22, Verizon New England, Inc., requests permission to lay and maintain underground conduits and handholds with wires and cables to be placed therein under the surface of the following public wear ways. Mount Pleasant Avenue, place two 4-inch conduits on Mount Pleasant Avenue, beginning at Manhole 72A, located on the northerly side of Mechanic Street, and running in a southerly direction down Mount Pleasant Avenue, a distance of approximately 241 feet to a point, and then westerly to the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. Mount Pleasant Avenue, place one 4-inch conduit on Mount Pleasant Avenue, beginning at Pool T3, located on the easterly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue, and running in a northwesterly direction along Mount Pleasant Avenue, a distance of approximately 120 feet to a point on the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. House Street, place one 4-inch conduit on House Street, beginning at a pool T2, located on the northerly side of House Street, and running in a westerly direction down House Street, a distance of approximately 209 feet to the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. Reason, place conduit to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications.
9-22 is referred to the chairwoman of public service.
Yes, Mr. President, regular course. We need to establish a public hearing for 10, 12, 21 at 6:45 PM.
Okay. You've heard the request to give 9-22 further regular course and establish a public hearing on October 12th at 6:45 PM. All those in favor, please recognize in usual manner. Anyone opposed?
Some abstaining.
Oh, okay.
If I could, Mr. President, real quickly, this isn't the same discussion we had before with digging up the road to Mount Pleasant Avenue, is it?
I don't believe so. I remember that one pretty well, but I think this is something new, right?
It is something new.
Yeah.
It's something new.
All right, so that public hearing date has been established by a vote of seven to zero with one abstention. Moving on to 10-22.
10-22, Revolutionary Clinics 2, Inc., seeks a special permit from the Leominster City Council to operate a recreational marijuana establishment use at 130 Pioneer Drive in Leominster. It accords with zoning ordinance, Chapter 22, Article 18, Marijuana Facilities, Section 22-105.
Petition 10-22 is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course with referrals to the planning board, the building and. Building Inspector, the Police Chief, the Health Director, and the Mayor's Office. We also need to establish a public hearing for October 25, 2021, at 6:15 p.m.
Okay, so 10-22 is proposed to be given regular course with referrals to planning, building, Police Department, health, and mayor, and to establish a hearing date on October 25, 2021, at 6:15 p.m. All those in favor of establishing that he, oh, yes.
I'm going to abstain from participating in this due to conflict.
All right, very well. Your abstention is noted, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr. Anything else? All those in favor of establishing the hearing date of October 25, 2021, at 6:15 p.m., please recognize the usual manner. Hearing date is established by a vote of seven to zero with one abstention. Moving on to matters before the City Council, starting with the financial report. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year on July 1, 2021, with $19,904,602.80. To date, we have earned interest of $6,816.87. If we grant everything that is on the agenda for the first time this evening, we will have spent $885,064.12, and that will leave us with a balance of $19,026,355.55, and that is the financial report.
Very well, thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on to finance, and C-16, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-16. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests to amend appropriation C-03 to state an appropriation of $220,534 be made to the School Department Expense Account, the same amount to be raised by the fiscal year 2022 E-rate revenue. I did have a conversation today with the Comptroller, Jen Reddington, and she did indicate to me that when she originally submitted this as C-03, she factored in the full amount, and, you know, it was a simple error on her part that there was about 20 or 25% of this that was already in the School Department's budget. And so we do need to sort of give this a blessing to acknowledge that it's only $220,534, because if you read the petition, if you read the, what's been submitted to us, that we're raising this from the fiscal year 2022 E-rate revenue, we're not even getting that much. So we do need to amend this so that it will be all correct. So it would be my recommendation to grant C-16, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Thank you. Counsel Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Counsel Angelini?
I agree as well.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-16. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of C-16, please recognize the usual manner. Anyone opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, C-16 is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $220,534 be made to the School Department Expense Account, the same amount to be raised from the fiscal year 2022 E-rate revenue. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea. Yea. Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-17, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-17. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that an appropriation of $4,350 be made to the Conservation Department Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. I did, once again, have a conversation with Jen Reddington today to ask her what this was all about, and she indicated to me that they were going through some minutes from previous years, and they are all on tape, but some of them were never recorded and put into words and put on file. So they have somebody going through and taking care of all of that now, so that we can make sure that everything is properly on file for the record. And so this is what, what it is going to cost for us to do that, and it would be my recommendation to grant C-17. I'll ask, did you check with members of my committee?
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Counsel Angelini? You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs, I'm sorry, Finance Committee to grant C-17. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-17, please recognize the usual manner. Anyone opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, C-17 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $4,350 be made to the Conservation Department Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea. Yea. Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to, well, the emergency preamble will be ratified at the next meeting. We've already taken that up. Moving on to Legal Affairs, and 75-21, is the chairman ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 75-21. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of dumpster location and screening. I believe the recommendation, which was confirmed during the public hearing, is further time, and we just need to set a public hearing for the next meeting. I think I only need five minutes.
We'd have to start at 5:55 the next meeting because we're completely booked unless you feel okay with it becoming October 25th. We have room then.
Anybody have an objection to 5:55? I don't see anyone, so let's go with that.
Go with that, okay. It's fine.
All right, so the recommendation of Legal Affairs is for a continued, is further time and a continued public hearing of October 12th at 5:55 p.m. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing the continued hearing date, please recognize the usual manner. Anyone opposed? The hearing date is established for October 12th at 5:55 p.m. Moving on to Ways and Means, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Request to sign the election order for the November 2, 2021 municipal election. I have to read this, right?
I can if you don't want to.
No, I can read it. I just wanted to be sure. I had to.
You don't have to because it's going to be published in the.
There are no requests for any additions. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Leominster Municipal Election Order, November 2, 2021. Voted that meetings of the citizens of the city qualified to vote in the municipal election shall be held on Tuesday, the second day of November 2021, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the purpose of casting their votes in the municipal election for the candidate of the following officers: Mayor for this municipality, four councilors-at-large for this municipality, one counselor for each ward for this municipality, three school committee members-at-large for this municipality, one school committee member for each ward for this municipality. All offices to have terms of two years, beginning on the first Monday of January 2022. It is further ordered that the following polling places are designated by the City Council. Ward 1, Precinct A, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward 1, Precinct B, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward 1, Precinct C, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward 2, Precinct A, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Iskloide Avenue. Ward 2, Precinct B, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Iskloide Avenue. Ward 2, Precinct C, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Iskloide Avenue. Ward 3, Precinct A, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward 3, Precinct B, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward 3, Precinct C, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward 4, Precinct A, Senior Citizen Drop-In Center, 5 Pond Street. Ward 4, Precinct B, Leominster Veterans Center, 100 West Street. Ward 4, Precinct C, Leominster Veterans Center, 100 West Street. Ward 5, Precinct A, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street. Ward 5, Precinct B, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street. Ward 5, Precinct C, First Baptist Church of Leominster, 23 West Street. Hereof fail naught and make return of this warrant with your doings therefore, thereon, at the time and place of said voting, given our hands is 27th day of September 2021 after we vote, members of the council. Order posted in public places as follows: City Hall, Veterans Center, Police Department, Fire Stations, Library, Recreation Department, DPW, School Department, Cemetery Department, Wastewater Treatment Plant, Emergency Management, Montezuma Opportunity Council, Spanish Center, Post Office. Warrant must be posted by October 26, 2021, at least seven days prior to November 2, 2021 municipal election. Is this automatically go posted in all the voting locations as well? Like, would there be one on the door of the Eagles or the wall?
So on election day, they get a set of sample ballots for the day.
On election day, yeah, but how about?
But the warrant doesn't get posted.
When do you post these?
These get posted by a constable at least the seven days prior, but it will happen probably by the second week of October at the latest.
So could we get one in the polling places as well?
I could probably get most of them to comply. I'd have to get permission for the ones that aren't actual public places, unless it's an election day.
If it's going to cause any, any confusion, we won't bother this here, but I think we should look at that, just.
Sure.
Offer as much information as we can to the voters.
Yeah, I can reach out to the First Baptist Church, the Fraternal Order of the Eagles Hall, and see if they'd be willing to let us do that.
All right. Okay, the recommendation, my recommendation would be to accept or confirm? Confirming? Confirming. The municipal election order for November 2, 2021. Check with members of my committee.
Counsel Dombrowski?
I agree.
And Counsel Shalfo Zephyr, right?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the election order. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call vote, starting with Counsel Afrida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea. The election order has been confirmed. Moving on to new business, starting with the first reading of an ordinance, 6-22.
Thank you, Mr. President. 6-22. City Council Vice President David R. Cormier requests to amend Chapter 13, Article 3, Division 2, Section 13-34, no parking on certain streets, and add the following: Tucker Drive, both sides from the intersection of Francis Street for 200 feet. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Counsel David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Counsel Afrida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea. The first reading of 6-22 has been adopted. Moving on to 7-22.
7-22. Mr. President, City Council Vice President David R. Cormier requests to amend Chapter 13, Article 3, Division 2, Section 13-34, no parking on certain streets, and add the following: Francis Street, both sides from number 50 to Tucker Drive. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Okay. Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Counsel David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to adopt the first reading of an ordinance, 7-22. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counsel Afrida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea. First reading of 7-22 has been adopted. Do we have any old business? I see Counsel Dombrowski first.
Yeah, if we could just go back to 10-22, the referral to the Police Chief?
Yes.
I don't think he's been involved in one of these before, so, you know, if he has any questions, you know, he can contact me. But it's really about the security.
Security plan.
Yeah.
All right.
Just, you know, make sure he knows that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Dombrowski. Counsel Afrida, I saw your hand too.
Yes, just real quickly, I missed it when we were doing the minutes, but I'd just like to correct the moment of silence that we had for Tom Pacarelli at the last meeting.
Yeah.
It's incorrectly stated as Matt Pacarelli. I just wanted to be sure that we corrected that to Tom, Tom Pacarelli.
That was one of the corrections. I, yeah.
All right, good. I'm glad we got that taken care of. All right, anybody else have any old business? All right, community calendar? See nothing under the community calendar? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Counsel Shalfo Zephyr, Counsel Arndinger, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com.